Good morning, friends. Today is June 29, 10:00 a.m. This is a meeting of the Hadley Housing Authority. David Moskin, Acting Chair. To my right is Sue Oppenheimer and Harry Chadwick. My left is Reese, and I'm going to get your last name.
Smith Free.
What?
Smith Free.
Smith Free, thank you, Reese. And Richie Whitkis, longtime previous chair. Well, good morning. We have two meetings, actually, today. One is to run through our normal agenda, and the other is to hear the Housing Authority's annual proposed plan for fiscal year 2024. So let me get back to my agenda here for a second, if I can. And let's see what we've got here. Just give me one moment, folks.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you, Reese, always there. Way ahead of the rest of us. The first agenda item this month is "Topics Not Reasonably Anticipated: Forty-eight Hours in Advance of the Meeting." Don't usually do that at the end. We'll do that first, now to get through. Does anybody have anything that's not on the agenda you came in to mention? Harry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Came in yesterday, so I believe that's not reasonably anticipated within the 48 hours. My neighbor, who works for the USA Trash Recycling People, was down at Burke's Way yesterday and met somebody from management down there. My name was dropped. But topics not reasonably anticipated. I'd like an update on what goes on over there with the trash, receptacles, and should we have a dumpster there instead of barrels? And there's all... Excuse me? She's talking over me. I have nothing.
All right, go ahead.
Gives me any issue. So I'd like an update on what's going on at Burke's Way with the trash. Whoever the management person was there can give us an update on that. Thank you.
You have Bruce?
No, wouldn't be able to. So I can give you an update on it. About the trash, what the trash did, we should.
Thank you.
So we might go into the report.
We're here. We're going to hear from the Executive Director Pamela Rogers regarding Mr. Chadwick's question when she gives her report. Anything else? Sue?
Yes, board members came up with topics to add to the agenda for this particular month's meeting, and none of the agendas that we wanted to bring up have appeared on this agenda. They were left out. The other thing I wanted to bring up at a meeting down the road is the fact that the office hours have changed here. We used to be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Now the office is only open Monday through Friday. We're Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday by appointment only. Last Friday, when I came, it was... Even though it's supposed to be manned on Monday and Friday, I didn't see anybody here. This is an applications office, so people come here to get an application. And last time I looked, the Cham's application box and the outside was empty. It didn't have any applications. Maybe since I looked the other day, it's full. But people drive here from a distance. They come here, the office isn't open, and no applications. You know, maybe they're there now and didn't look today.
Okay.
And I also wanted to bring up at a future meeting the... If the state says that there's a 21-day turnover for these apartments when somebody vacates, why do we have five apartments sitting there now vacant? I don't... And also, last summer, I think we had seven. Would also request a new grievance book for the board members that came out in 2022. And the other thing is to discuss the new name of DHCD, which is EDHLC, which I've since found out is really basically the same agency with a new name. And I talked to Maury Healy's office about that, so I wanted to know more about that.
Okay, so first of all, the agenda is my responsibility as the Acting Chair, so if things were left over, that's on me. I did mention the grievances as an agenda topic and was told that there is a new or a binder in the office and that that should be, and I think I was told, enough to get us up to speed on the current DHCD grievance policies and procedures, so we can talk more about that later. I was told that because... Or asked because of the presentation today with the annual plan, if we could postpone for a month, the other things. You had another... These are all good topics, and they can be addressed. So the apartment turnovers will be brought up during Bruce's presentation for Pamela's. And same with the office hours. So sure, Pamela's going to speak to that during the ED report. So grievances, apartment turnovers, office hours, and the new name of DHCD are all good topics. And if they aren't addressed today, we'll definitely get to them at the next meeting, okay? Sure. So again, the agenda is the chair's responsibility, so whoever's chair should be on top of board member requests for agenda items. They probably should have called you back to say, hey, I'm going to have to put those off for a month soon, so I'll try to be better about that if I continue as a chair. All right, anything else on... Not that didn't make the agenda, guys? All right, number... If not, election of officers. We don't have any permanent positions right now on the Acting Chair, but we're going to be open to volunteers and nominations for the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Treasurer. And as I remember, we've already elected Reese as Treasurer, so I don't think we have to do that again unless Reese has changed her mind about being Treasurer. Okay, don't hear anything over there. So we're talking about the Chair and the Vice Chair.
I'd make a motion that David Moskin be appointed full-time Chair of the Hadley Housing Authority.
I see that.
All right, we have a second... A motion and a second. Any discussion on that?
I would like to nominate Rich Whitkis as Chair.
Okay.
Because I think you said you didn't want to continue.
I'm happy to listen to other nominations, and I don't know how many months or years I'm going to be doing this, so if somebody else wants to volunteer. So Richie, you shouldn't be nominated if you're not willing, so I'd like to just confirm.
If you're still willing to do it, I'd let you have it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Any other nominations or volunteers? All right, then, we're going to vote on Dave Moskin being the Chair for at least one more month? All those in favor? I'll say two more months. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll do it for two more months. Thank you very much. Vice Chair, do we have any nominations or volunteers for Vice Chair? If not, I'm going to vote.
I'd like to nominate Rich to be Vice Chair.
Okay.
Let to nominate Harry Chadwick as Vice Chair.
Okay, first, we have a motion for Richie. Do we have a second on this?
No. I'll second it.
Okay, Richie's seconding his nomination as Vice Chair. Any other discussion?
Let to nominate Harry Chadwick as Vice Chair.
Okay, we have another nomination. I'm not sure if that's part of the discussion or whatever. Are you willing to be Vice Chair?
Yes, I am.
You are? Okay, we have a... We have a competition here. I don't know. Do we need more discussion, or are we just...
Yeah, we do need discussion.
Okay, more discussion. Reese, some comments on two candidates?
Oh, okay. Well, Rich has been Chair before. He knows the job. He knows clearly the Vice Chair job and can serve in your stead. And he has a lot of knowledge about the Board of Commissioners functioning and how the Housing Authority and DHCD or the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities function. And I just think it would be a smoother transition.
Okay, any other discussion on the Richie's?
Chair, I think the fact that Richie just served is a reason not to have him serve again, to give somebody else a chance.
I guess we're in the...
We have to take you to the...
Want to take the...
How do you do this?
Mr. Chair, can I just point out the bylaws don't require a Vice Chair?
Don't require a Vice Chair?
No, that's not a position and have the ballot box.
Okay, so I'd be most comfortable knowing that there was somebody that weren't there, so I'm not here. So I forget what the bylaws require. The Chair is Treasurer, who's Secretary?
Well, the Secretary is de facto the Executive Director.
Oh, really?
Yeah, she's the ex-institution.
Okay, Richie and Harry, I'm going to ask you guys, would you guys be willing to be alternate Chairs? In other words, if I can't make a meeting... Vice Chairs, if I can't make... Even if the other view takes over that month, if I can't make another meeting a second time, I can't make a meeting, the other one takes over. That okay with you guys? Or they will rule it? Does that make sense?
I prefer to have the Vice Chair permanently until...
Okay. All right. More discussion?
I think there's more continuity that way.
Yeah. Any discussion?
Yeah, I really understand the desire to both give people a chance, but we are already a brand-new board, except for Richie. And we really, you know... All of us have been just slightly over a year or less than a year, and you're brand-new, Sue. So when you have a Board of Commissioners who's that basically naive about how the process works, Robert's rules of order, all this kind of thing, how DHCD or, you know, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, their rules and regulations, Richie familiar. But when you have a board that's basically naive, it's better for the naive members to have an opportunity to learn and just to make everything smooth transition. We got really upset last year when we lost three people within months of each other. Let's just... That's my opinion, is that we focus on smooth...
Okay. Thank you, Reese. Sue?
I think that there's nothing wrong with a learning curve, and I think that even if we stumble having somebody that's never been Chair, that it's okay because we're not... This isn't a CEO company. This is a board meeting at a housing authority, and I think that we learn as we go, as we read the regs, as we attend meetings. That's why I feel that Richie's done his thing, and down the road, if he's still on the board, he wants to do it again, that's... He's more than welcome to reapply, but I'd like to see somebody else be given the opportunity.
Can I just make one correction? We are a corporation.
We are.
Yeah, housing authorities aren't quasi-demoralized agencies. I mean, it's corporate.
Let you see, I made a mistake. My first...
It's okay.
My first...
Stuff's already heard.
My first...
Okay. I understand.
There is legal and financial responsibility here.
I understand.
I think we would do better having a person... I mean, Harry's got all this experience as a state auditor, but it wasn't in housing, is my understanding. So housing is a whole completely different thing, and we have spent a lot of time trying to explain the rules and regs, which were of the Executive Office, to all of us. And Rich already knows them. I think we just need a smoother transition.
I think we both heard good arguments. Harry, you still want to do it, or...
Sure.
Okay, Richie, you still want to do it?
I'll take... Yeah, sure.
All right, so let's take a vote. All those in favor of Harry Chadwick being the Vice Chair? Please raise your hand. Harry, you're allowed to vote for yourself.
I didn't think we could vote for ourselves.
Yes, you can.
Okay?
Yes, you can.
I want to throw Harry into this, so he learns, and Reese, I will be there to help him learn. Richie, hope you're okay with this?
Yeah.
And Harry, I hope you lean on Richie as much as you can do to learn what you can. Approval of minutes. The minutes are in our packet. Everybody had a chance to look at them? Any changes? Reese usually raises...
Yep.
...or anything else.
Yeah. Yeah, I do. Again, there's, you know, spell check and everything else. You know, if a word processing program sometimes misses things or changes things. So about the spell check kind of stuff, I've already talked to Pamela about it.
Okay.
But so in the first paragraph of page one, about little more than half-down, it's a... She spoke with legal consultants, that's me, while at the conference the Commissioners attended. Well, I was the only Commissioner that attended. So it's the Mass Naro Conference. We could just say that, but I was the only Commissioner from here that attended, as well as the online training that is required. Okay, so we need to change that and remove the Commissioners' attendance. And maybe clarify it by saying Mass Naro Conference.
I have no objection. Can you work that out with Pamela?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Anything else?
Yes, the next line is if a Commissioner... There's actually two reasons, but it needed to be clarified. There's actually two in the first reason, which is the first reason is if a Commissioner is new inferring that had not attended previously, which was Sue's situation, or did not attend the deliberation on the item under discussion. So I also said that, did not attend the deliberation. Wasn't present at the meeting, stepped out of the room, whatever. Those are both... It's a lack of knowledge reason.
Okay. I have no objection. Anybody else say? If anybody objects to these changes, speak up, please. Okay?
After that is the Commissioner should say the reason they abstain. So eliminate the word "when", eliminate the word "vote". The Commissioner should say the reason they abstain, when they do indeed abstain.
Okay.
So it's really hard to transcribe this. I don't know how Pam does it. Okay, so on page three, end of the first paragraph, David Moskin asked Pamela Rogers to set up a training session for Commissioners with Gary DePace to explain. That is not a correction. Sorry about that. I had a question for later.
Okay.
So let me see. Page four is just a spelling error. It was auto-corrected and didn't get picked up.
Okay.
So also, she takes umbridge. Umbridge is different than umbridge to town, so that'll be corrected. Page five, about halfway down, explained that the executive session minutes won't be made public due to protecting the tenants' privacy. Should be period and then capital, both former and current.
Typos you could...
Okay, so it's still on page five, about three-quarters or three-fifths of the way down. It was explained that... I'm not sure about fossil fuel systems. I don't know where that came from. So I don't... We maybe have to go back and get the exact from the video, Pam. Does that make sense?
The fossil fuel, I believe when we were talking about the mini splits and...
Okay, so we just need to check what the video says because fossil fuel systems doesn't really make sense here. Okay.
Okay.
Let's see. Okay, so third line from last, same page five. Harry Chadwick said it was an AUP for ransom agreement procedure, and then it says agreement procedure again. So we can eliminate one of those, so...
Good.
Next one is... Never mind. Okay, that's it. Can you believe it?
Thank you for reading that carefully. Thank you. And Pamela, thank you for your hard work on these. I wish the paragraphs were shorter, but you're doing a great job. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to... On page one, approval of minutes, the 1, 2, 3, 4 line down, it's a very disjointed sentence. It says, Sue Oppenheimer pointed out that she felt a part of the meeting pointing out that Harry Chadwick came in late and David Moskin... The main gist of that whole thing, other than the fact that it's poorly written, the sentence. I just said it because it was five minutes. I said, do we have to write in the minutes? See, when someone walks in five minutes late, it's not as though they were an hour late. And when someone walks away, steps away, you'd think that they stepped away from the whole meeting and didn't come back. Maybe would have just taken a bathroom break. So I think that needs to be removed. And on the same page, page one, the fourth line up from the bottom, Sue Oppenheimer pointed out there's a mistake on page three about the eternal controls, allowing the former Commissioner to sign checks. This is wrong. It was the Executive Director. I have no idea what... It's just doing it. It doesn't really... It doesn't really say anything. It's very confusing if you read it. On page two, it says, Sue Oppenheimer said the tenants are feeling uncomfortable about the late fee, to which Pamela Rogers explained that is only two tenants that feel uncomfortable. And I think that kind of comment should not be made by an Executive Director, you know, that it's only two tenants. We have no idea who lives here and what their thought process is with. So I think something like that should not be mentioned.
Our minutes are a transcript. I mean, it's an absolute transcript of every word that's...
Right, but I think that something like that should be excluded. It might be on them, but I mean, making a comment about tenants is not a...
No, and that comes that way for people, too, as well.
Right.
So we're doing the last month's minutes. You're bringing up some points that may be valid to discuss.
Right.
But right now, we're just checking this for accuracy.
Well, the accuracy is the disjointed sentences. It doesn't... There's certain sentences that don't make sense. If anybody read them, they wouldn't understand what was being said. The other thing is that... Let me see.
Excuse me, I want to be here.
I think there's...
I want to keep it moving, so...
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, there's more. Maybe we can come back to this? No?
Probably not, but...
Can I make a question?
Sure, Reese.
As Pamela said, when it comes to minutes, we can't change what people said because we don't like how it came out.
I didn't mean change. I meant that it shouldn't have never been said in the first place. It's not...
Well, there were several things that shouldn't have been said even by a Board of Commissioner who'd made the statement because it's day-to-day. However, then you get untoward comments back that you don't like. So we need to be very careful. And I'm just saying this because now you're a Board of Commissioner, but we need to be careful as a Board of Commissioner to not bring up day-to-day things.
Okay. So this is a review of the minute, yeah?
It says here that there's three vacancies at Golden Ford on page four, and there's five vacancy. That needs to be corrected. No. At the time, it was three.
Yeah, so this is a record of what was discussed or set out of this. If there's misinformation, then that's a different time. You know what I mean?
Right. So when do we bring these up? Go into more depth and actual on the agenda, so...
We're going to be hearing about vacancies shortly. All right, so entertain a motion to approve these minutes. That's correct.
That's true. But well, I have one other thing. On page six, when the vote for the audit was taken, you, Mr. Vice Chairman, at the time Acting Chair, you voted no pending the discussion with Gary DePace. That meeting did not happen, did not take place. So... But there should be some more discussion or more identification here of why you voted no because you said you were voting no until we meet with the auditor, Gary DePace. That's not it. And so I don't know where the audit is left off other than it was voted down at this meeting. I planned to bring it up again, but didn't make the agenda for this meeting. Why it was left off, I don't know. But you had more to say about meeting with the auditor, Gary DePace, and what's in here. So do you recall what you were saying, why you voted no?
A month ago? What was the vote on?
The vote was for the independent objective audit. It was voted down. You said you voted no until we...
Right.
You and I are going to meet with Gary.
All right, so we're supposed to be going over the minutes here, and I don't remember exactly what the reason was other than...
But it's not...
My thinking at the time was, and is today, that you or we, you and I, would be meeting with Gary DePace.
Correct.
You talked to Gary DePace. He...
We had established a meeting to meet.
Right.
And then he discussed that with the Executive Director, and that meeting never happened.
Yeah, so Michael at the time was to get you either comfortable or uncomfortable with what his process was auditing his own work. And this is really a different agenda item which I would like to discuss today. But as far as the minutes go, as I remember, a month ago, my reason for voting no was... The goal was to get you comfortable with how he audits his own ones. And if you could not get comfortable with that, then we had a topic right to talk about.
You had a meeting set up, and that meeting didn't take place.
Right. So Gary has offered to come and talk to the whole board to do a training. I think that's a great idea, and I look forward to that. I don't know who's going to set that up, but we should set that up as soon as possible because, Mr. Chadwick, I want you to be comfortable with the process here since you have a background in auditing and such. So my thinking at the time, if that's your question, is that I wanted you and Gary to have a professional discussion about what his process was. And if you'd come back to the board and say, I understand now what he does, I'm okay with it, or not. So I guess that didn't happen, so we'll do it when Gary comes in to train or discuss with the whole board what his process was.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
But since this was already discussed and voted on to have this meeting, and it didn't happen, we can't overlook the fact that it didn't happen. And maybe down the road, Gary's coming, but it didn't get, it didn't happen one.
That's true.
There has to be people taking responsibility for their behaviors.
I don't know why it didn't happen exactly. Yes, please.
Well, one thing was, is if you'll notice in the minutes, it said for the Board of Commissioners. And somehow or other, in your communication to set this up somehow, it then became just Harry and you, and that is not what the board voted. So we cannot ever, as Board of Commissioners, decide to take an action that was not voted by a quorum on the board. We cannot independently go meet with a fee accountant or anyone else, another housing authority, a, anyone else without a quorum vote of the board. You did not have that to eliminate the rest of the board as participants in this.
Okay, I disagree with that opinion, but I hear you. I respect your opinion. Anybody else on this? So I think the answer is going to be Gary's going to come in, and we're going to all say like, this is good enough for us, all of us, or not. Since Harry was the one that was most vocal about being uncomfortable with the idea of a auditor or accountant auditing his own work, to me, that was the simplest, fastest, and allowed process. Get Harry together with Gary, see if Harry can get comfortable. And if not, go back to the full board.
Not even the chair of us at authority to disregard a quorum vote.
Okay. Thank you. We can talk further about that. I do have a different understanding of what individual board members can and cannot do. So are we doing the annual plan right now?
You still have to vote to approve.
Oh, okay. So can we approve the minutes, and will have further discussion on topics that we we still want to work out?
I'd like to make a point.
Yeah.
We have had many from three different commissioners questions about the minutes. It has now jumbled. In other words, if you say approve the minutes, whose corrections are you approving?
Fair enough. I agree.
Can we make a suggestion that we make the corrections and then table it and bring it back next month?
Yeah. Okay, that's fine with me. Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's vote.
Right, so we're voting to table the minutes from last month until they are corrected and to vote on them next month's meeting as corrected. All in, do I have that motion, please?
Make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll check it.
Have we had a second and a discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
I think it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. So on my agenda, it says annual plan, five year plan. Is, are we doing it now?
Please.
So we actually did the annual plan on Tuesday. We covered the entire annual plan and went through it and gave a presentation on it. That was the scheduled hearing that was scheduled almost two months ago. It was set up for Tuesday. And we didn't want them back to back, so we actually moved the board meeting to Thursday, so it would be after the plan. So I'm going to give a little summary of the plan, but I'm not going to cover everything. I was almost two hours here on Tuesday covering this, and we don't have that kind of time, I'm sure. But I will cover a few of the slides and answer questions that you may have. And then it'll be required, you know, for the vote to approve the plan.
So I'm sorry, Bruce, your understanding was that a board meeting was called, a board of commissioners meeting was called for Tuesday to review the annual plan?
No, the Tuesday is a public hearing. So the public hearing is where I put out the, I kind of cover the annual plan. We also hear from the residents of any items they would like to see included. And so we include that when we submit the annual plan. And we did have some comments on Tuesday from, from residents on things they'd like to see in the five, five year plan, you know, so for the capital improvement. So what I'm going to do is just, again, cover the annual plan. And it was, you know, the hearing, the way it works is the hearing is set up in advance of the board meeting voting on it. So the hearing already happened. We, we had a hearing, and that was.
There's no commissioners who have correct.
There was, there was one commissioner here. Oh, there was two commissioners.
Two, every.
Yes, yes, there was two commissioners here.
Right. So your understanding is the commissioners were invited, aware of that meeting here?
It was a public meeting. Matter of fact, when we set the meeting, when we set up the date for this meeting, it was discussed that we were going to be having the hearing on Tuesday. So we said, well, we shouldn't have them right back to back, so why don't we make the board meeting Thursday? I don't know if anyone remembers that, but that was, that was the discussion.
Too, yeah.
So, so I'm just clarifying that, but I want to get on with what I have, so I'll have, you know, save some time. And I did answer a lot of the questions yesterday. I would be happy to answer questions as, as time permits today, as you permit the time. But let me just go through the presentation. That's okay. So I did cover real briefly that the annual plan is intended to provide insight into the authority's operations and plans for the coming fiscal year as they affected by the state public authority. And our fiscal year, by the way, is September, October 1st to September 30th. October 1st, that's the fiscal year. So when we're talking about fiscal year 24, it starts October 1st. All right, so the annual plan, and this was basically my outline of the plan, excuse me, was proposed capital improvement plan, which is a five year plan. I'm going to shut off a couple lights, it might help. This show up a little bit, there's one over here as well. Does that help?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's those windows up there that I, I can't seem to block. So this is basically the outline that is in the annual plan packet that was put out. It was, it was put out almost two months ago. I took this right out of that, that, that list, the proposed five year plan, the proposed maintenance and repair plan, the current operating budget. I only have basically a summary of that, the total revenues coming in and what the expenses were, 22 and 23. And, and then also the responses to the performance management review findings. I'll cover that item as I come to it, but basically, we didn't have a PMR this year. The way that works is the, the housing authorities that have did really well on their PMR last year, performance management review, they don't have to have a PMR next year. And it gives the opportunity for the, the agency, the used to be DHCD, now it's the executive office of Housing Livable Communities, HLC is the accurate acronym at this point. So they, they, it gives them more time to do a deeper dive into the housing authorities that need help. So the housing authorities that have a lot of, there's basically three ratings you get for the PMR, no finding, operational guidance, and corrective action. So that, the housing authorities that have a lot of corrective action and operational guidance, they have to get a PMR every year. If the housing authority has mostly no findings and maybe very few operational guidance, they don't, they don't, and they have a score system where they decide what that is, they don't have a PMR every year. So when it comes to that point on the PMR, I'm just going to say we didn't have one, so there's, there's nothing to report on it. So, so that's just covering the agenda here. List of the housing authority policies, I just have a list, the dates that they were voted on by the board of commissioner. It lets you see what the policies are that were voted on, what the dates were that they were voted on. And then we also have a list of waivers, same thing, we don't have any waivers. That, this is where I would cover it, but we don't have any waivers. And then there's a tenant satisfaction survey. I really am not going to take time to go over that. It is in that packet. It kind of shows the differences between small housing authorities in Western Mass, HAD, the housing authority, and then all of the state, the entire state. So it gives those three, and we only had 18 that participated in that survey from this housing authority at 667 Development in Golden Ford. So when you see those results, that those are, those are based on. The annual plan was mandated by something called an Act Relative to Local Housing Authorities in Mass General Law, Chapter 121B, Section 28A. There also the LTO, the local tenant owners, they regulate by 760 CMR 6.09. Just for references, I like to put this slide up here. God gave me common sense. Obviously, they got to work a little bit on the spelling, but most of these regulations were built with common sense. I couldn't resist. I took that at a housing authority doing inspections one day, and somebody marked that in the basement, you know, so. So this is our developments here. We basically have the 705 Berke Way Apartments. There's six buildings, which are duplexes, so that means we have 12 units over there. And then the Golden Ford Apartments, there's nine buildings, 40 units. One of those buildings is this building here. So there's really eight buildings with residents plus the office community here. So we have total 52 units at our development. And looking at the yearly awards from DHC Formula Funding, I just want to point out that they target their most urgent capital needs in the CIP in the first three years of the CIP. So we have, we're going to have a, we're going to show you a five year plan. It basically is going to spread out the years, you know, all the way out to like 28, 28, 29. And then the first three years is funded. Those funds come from the legislator voting on how much funds they're going to provide to, I'm going to call it the department, which is DHCD, it's a little easier than the whole app. So they provide funds to the department for capital improvements, and those funds are spread out to the 238 housing authorities across the state, and it's based on the unit count. So that's why I covered the units first. With the amount of units that we have depends, shows what kind of funds we get. Boston Housing Authority would get a lot more funds than HADD, the housing authority. And then there's some other even smaller than HADD, the housing authority, like Hatfield over there, I think is like 30 or so, you know. So they have less units, they would get less overall capital funds. But there is a formula for it. That's why they call it formula funding. Okay? So the first three years are based on the actual awards made to the LHA. Well, years four and five are based, based on estimated planning amounts. So what we're doing is we know roughly what we get every year. Let's go ahead and put something in year four and five, you know, just so that we can always have some items in the plan and discussing them and prioritizing them. Sometimes things come up, we'll move those, those things up. Like if there was a, if there was something that came up, we, where they needed attention quicker, you know, like paving the parking lot right there, that's, that's like four and five, because you'll see the expenses, I get to it. We might have to move that up if it like deteriorated, fell apart through this bad rough snow seizing, a lot of frosty or something, we might move it up. So it's good to have it in the plan somewhere, you know, as we see and need. So here is the first three years of the five year plan. This is the funding of it. So this 396,000 is kind of like the base funding. It's the, it's the gross amount. But they start taking funds away from that amount that make, that are not spendable for our projects. For example, they want us to keep an emergency reserve. So out of that three years, they took 10% off of $39,000, says this, keep that aside for emergencies, don't use it for roofs and windows and, and whatever else, keep that separate. So it's not really spendable when we say this 390,000. And then they, they also, so that leaves a net of 357. These are planned spending. We actually have funds that were planned, 310,000, actual plan for the first three years. So these are the items that we already have, you know, in, in the plan that says this is where that money is going to go. That other bit, the other amount is going to be, would be used for, you know, anything that would come up. But the unrestricted formula funding down here is 306, because they also had to set ADA money aside. So money has to come out of the top of that three year. Now it comes down to basically funds awarded by DACD that we can use over the next three years, is 306,000. So if you think of 306,000 divided by three years, that's like 102,000 a year, right, roughly. So let's take a look at some of the plans that we have. So there were some other funds that came in, in, in this, these funds here, the 74,000, this is an addition to the capital improvement plan. Basically, it was in this position that I'm, I'm doing, and before me, it was Chad Howard. He wrote a request to the Community Preservation Act Fund and said, we would like to have you donate some funds for our window project to help the, the building envelope here. And so he, he was successful, and they awarded us $75,000. So this window project has gotten quite expensive, but we're helped by the CPA of 75,000. I've been in touch with the CPA all along because they're going to require a sign. Once construction starts, they'll, they'll put a sign up, and it's going to say that they are, some of the funds were provided by the CPA. Okay? And so that means we add a total of that 443,000, if you add those funds in. This other funds was 58,000, was ARPA funds that came in, and I'll, and I'll get to where we're spending some of those funds as well. So our, during the pandemic, they came up with some extra funds for the housing authorities. They helped with some of these because they knew that, you know, that formula funding, what they, they provide for us is only like a drop in the bucket of what's needed. If you take all of these projects into the capital planning system, they need over a billion dollars worth of funds, but the legislator only approves like 100 million a year, and it divides up between all the housing authorities. So it can only go so far. They, they, they can only fund so much. But we, we did get the, that, those ARPA funds that came in, which was above and beyond. So I'm going to get through the presentation, and then we'll answer that question.
Can we put the air conditioner back on, or little, why is this getting a little warm here?
It's okay with me if, I don't, I don't know if the, the hearing.
Maybe.
But the. All right, so this is our, this is the five year plan. You can see we go from 24, 23 was the remaining, and then 24 through 28. Okay? And so that window project, it's $245,000 is what that project came up to. Now this, remember, this document was put out about two months ago. Last month, the board voted on a change order that came in that was for $28,000. Once they did the markup, they found that they had to, there was, there was some more work that had to be done for these windows and for specifically the PVC panels to go on the front, needed some construction work done. That came to $28,000. The board voted to approve that last month. So this number is actually going to be higher. I can't change this document. This is the document that was put out two months ago, you know, but it just kind of shows that the, where those funds take off and where they go to. This showed 155,000 of it coming in there into, in from the fiscal year 24. We also had that CPA funds of 75,000. Okay? So down here, Berke Way Apartments, this is, you can see in the year 24, we, we have some improvements for unit turnovers. Now these unit turnovers, a lot of these units have been not had a, 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 a full remodeling in many, many years. And had one recently when I started last year, we, we did not have approved funds for it, and we had to get it done. So we actually ended up using a lot of our reserve, and it was almost $50,000 to turn over one of these units. So these 11,000 doesn't go very far. You know, that's like the kitchen cabinets, you know. I mean, I had floors downstairs, floors upstairs, windows put in, bathroom remodeled. All this, all this cost a lot of funds, and so that doesn't go very far, but I just wanted you to have an idea, when we have these funds in here, they, they, they don't usually stretch that far, you know, but we have it in there for anything that comes up in the unit turnovers, we have some funds in there to try to cover them. And as long as this gets approved, I'll have them to use next time. Last year, I didn't have them to use. I didn't have funds that were approved for turnovers. So this replace hot water heater, it's not really hot water heaters, because we have boiler systems that heat the hot water, they're tanks, they're just storage tanks. Well, they have reached their life expectancy, so part of our plan is to replace the tank, the storage tanks. The water's heated from the boiler, and, and those tanks are past their life expectancy. They're a lot less expensive than if they were, you know, heat generating boilers, hot water heaters.
And this is the last one, because we've done almost all of it, but we have one or too much.
Okay. And so. Oh, last, last year's, I guess I had it noted down, last year's CIP was 184. It's just, it's just pointing out how the plan changes, you know. We had a five year plan last year, and we had the windows. Last year, it was 184. So I actually pulled this right off of the plan from last year, and it was 183,901. And now you can see it's, it's gone up 245. By the time we went to bid, and we had multiple bidders on it, we had a couple that were really close, like a few hundred dollars apart. And even though that's what their bids were, it ended up bringing the price way up. Bid was over 190,000, plus you have to add in all the designer fees, permit fees, and there's, there's a lot of other costs that go into it on top of the bid and contract. So we also have here, some of the five year plan was this chimney. Now, this chimney was actually in the plan way out, four or five years last year, but some people complained about the chimneys. They were really concerned about it. So we also had some ARPA funds come in. So I said, hey, why don't we take those ARPA funds, let's get that chimney moved up. So we're actually paying for these, those chimneys. Do I have it on this slide yet? Here it is, right here. So this, this chimney, we're paying for getting some of this chimney work done sooner rather than later with that ARPA funds. And then another thing that we added that was a concern that wasn't in the five year plan before was these rear doors. It's hard for me to see it. Here, there, rear, rear door is $98,000. This is just one phase. The, the actual cost to replace the whole framing and the doors at all, all 40 units is, I have 139,000, and that is just phase, that's phase one and two, and then there's a phase three of another $64,000. So we had the project managers from the regional capital assistance team come up with these numbers for us. They did their research. They said, this is what it's going to cost to put those doors in. Every component of the housing authority is in something, it's something called our capital improvement plan. The CIP, we actually have an inventory of every little component. The windows have a, have a lifespan, the doors have a lifespan, the roof has a lifespan. It's all spelled out there, and it also shows what the replacement cost is. So when we say we need to put the doors in, we go into that system, and the system tells us, this is what it's going to cost you to replace those doors today. And so that's why we come up with that 139,000, it's almost $200,000. Remember, we get 102,000 per year is what we have to play with, and we have 200,000 just for the doors, and we have 245,000 for the windows that we're doing. So you can see how that money is just used up very quickly when we start doing some of these large projects. They're very necessary, but the money goes quickly. So roof replacement, this 15,000, you can see this is way out 26 and 27, because that's the soonest we could put it in the budget, 26, 27. And that's just this roof here. The roofs that are covering the, where the residents are have been replaced. They're newer than these roofs, they're in better shape than these roofs. This roof's not as in great shape. It wasn't, it wasn't servicing tenants, so it wasn't done at the time. It wasn't it wasn't servicing tenants, so it wasn't done at the time. But we do have it in the plan because we did have a leak. I actually had a leak fixed. This, you know, about six months ago, that was leaking down into the boiler room from up on this roof. So I had a company come in and do those repairs. Kind of just mend it a little bit, but it all needs to be redone. And then you have down here repave the driveway. Now, you can see this cost is a hundred thirty seven thousand dollars. This is going all the way to twenty eight and 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 we're putting thirty seven thousand into it. We still need another hundred thousand. Between twenty eight and twenty nine, we need another hundred thousand to be able to repave the the parking. Okay, so. I have a paving project at another housing authority. And I went to look at it and get it repaired and it was way too much to get repaired. And I looked back in the records and I found out it had just been done several years ago. But it needs to be done again because they didn't do it right. So some they just did a little resurfacing on the top of it and it didn't last. It it was horrible. So when we do these projects, we want to do them thoroughly. We want them to last. We don't want to have to. Place it before I can do anything else at that development, I'm already looking at doing a new paving. It's in bad condition. I have to I have to get. You know, I have to take care of it, patch it because it's got it's dangerous condition. It's got trip hammers. So I'm just saying, you know, some of these things we had to push way out because of how much everything else costs. So here are some of the other funding that we have. So the Golden Core Windows, I already told you there was seventy five thousand dollars CPA funds came in. And this is addition to our formula funding. This. The these here, both the. The forty four thousand plus the thirteen thousand, we had. Sixty, almost seventy thousand dollars is what we had from those ARPA funds. And so this is where we're we're putting those ARPA funds. These items. On the five year plan last year, we're pushed way out, but we said, let's bring them in since we have extra funds. Let's take some of those that are further out. We'll get them done sooner. So we actually have with this chimney project, it is going right on right now. The ARPA funds are paying for it. I've already had the architect out and he's doing, you know, the design for what has to be done. Our cat came out with us, the Regional Capital Assistance Team, project manager, and myself, we all met up here. We had to have testing done, believe it or not, even though they were outside chimneys. We had had testing done for asbestos. And that was part of the expense of the project, but they actually did find some in the sealant at the roof level. You know, when you're at the bottom of the chimney, so they had to look at everything just in case we have to go that far. The plan is not to go that far, it's to replace where the damage is. So that's just a a little bit of the the funding plan. So here. You can see. Okay, this one, this is just last year's plan. I just threw it in as a comparison. Remember I told you that the the windows showed one eighty nine? This year is two forty five. So I just brought in the I just brought in the last year to compare this two forty five. To the one eighty three what it was before. Alright, if you wanted to see what why do we have a five year plan last year? Now we have another five year plan. Well, things got shifted around. ARPA money came in, you know, needs needs came came up, cost went up on the windows. And so we had to adjust a lot of these things that we had, you know, last year. So that was basically the capital improvement part of the plan, where 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 our funds are going. A lot of it's going to these windows that are coming in. The 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 window project had a change order last month. We we came out and did another markup on this window. You see it's boarded up over here. That 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 they did a markup and they looked at the rest of the project and the original plan didn't replace the trim out here. So we are looking to do another change order or it's a smaller amount. And we also had put the the little grids in the windows, they call mullions. We included it with the architect and somehow in an addendum it got taken out. But I noticed it before the windows got ordered, so the I was like, how come they took these out? We want them in there, you know. It's gonna they're gonna be nice new windows with the with the mullions in them. And it's just gonna look very uniform, consistent. It's gonna they're nicer to have. So I noticed that, so they're gonna put those back in, so that I think it was like a couple thousand dollars to put in the mullions back in. All the windows before they got ordered. So that's why that project got held up, in case anyone's wondering. That project is 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 still going to be, you know, five to six weeks out from the time, you know, the windows got got ordered. All these change orders that had to get improved. Alright, so the rest of this is really just the maintenance plan. There is a a maintenance and repair plan in place. There's there's a there's a plan on how we do maintenance here. And the the bottom line goal is to make sure that the units are decent, safe and sanitary. I like to throw in good repair. We actually had someone at the meeting on Tuesday complained about their door. And it said maintenance was over there right away to fix it, so, you know. We do have ways to take care of it. If you make these things known to us, we we take care of those work orders. So. The maintenance repair plan basically is outlined with the classification of maintenance tasks. We have an emergency response system, so if there's any emergency. Twenty four seven, three sixty five if something you need to touch with somebody. If it's a fire alarm that goes off, I actually, you know, get notified personally and it has happened midnight, two A M, whatever. But then then we determine whether or not we have to send maintenance out as as well on on those calls. But twenty four seven, three sixty five, our maintenance will respond. We have the normal maintenance response system. There there is procedures and priorities that we have in place with our plan. We have a work order management system. We have a system that keeps track of all of the work orders. You see reports every month that we decided to, you know, put in there. They're not voteable, but it's just information to show we have this in place. We also have. May a preventive maintenance schedule. We have regularly, I think, I saw someone on Tuesday when I was on my way in cleaning the gutters out, you know, something like that is a preventive maintenance. Plan item, and we have routine maintenance, so we have regular work that's done cleaning. You'll also see that on the work order report. That we cleaned the laundry room, we cleaned the floors and so forth, and then we have unit inspections. So. This next section is the operating budget, okay? Again, I do not have a lot of information on it. You're gonna see it's very, very basic information. And it's it shows the budget and compares twenty two and twenty three. I will mention, you know, down the bottom it talks about this per unit per month. We call it the P U M. And that's where you take the totals of the expenses and it comes up with you divide it by the units. You have a per unit per month what the expenses are, and then you have the the income, the revenue. As a list here, same thing. It's going to show the per unit per month. So it gives you a quick look to see. You know, how are we comparing with the actual expenses to the actual money that has been received? Alright, so this is just basically, I took multiple pages you might see on the report and I just summarized them on one. Because I thought it was great to see the revenue and the expenses on one page and see them all together here. So I'm going to pop on this side just so that faces you when I'm when I'm looking at these. So here you see the twenty twenty two approved budget, two hundred and thirty eight thousand was from rents. Operating subsidy is ninety two thousand for the total revenue of three hundred and thirty. That was the budget. The actual amounts received was two twenty four compared to budgeted two thirty eight. So they were short three point four percent of the of the amounts received for rents. They did not get as much rent as we expected to get based on, you know, what the rent levels were. This operating subsidy, so this fair market value of what the units should be rented at. And. The offsets that are here can only pay a certain amount of that fair market value. So the subsidies come from the department where they they provide extra funds to help make up the difference between the two. And so. Twenty twenty three, the approved budget said it should be two hundred and thirty two thousand. We should get in rents and we should get a hundred thirty nine thousand in subsidy and sometimes those increase. Sometimes they increase based on the amount of rents that we receive. Or a total of three hundred and seventy four thousand was the budget for twenty twenty three. So this is that per unit per month of the P U N. So you can see the total, there was about six hundred dollars per unit. Revenue that we we had come in for the units. Now this is the expenses. So we, the budget approved three hundred and thirty three thousand and the actual expenses was three hundred and thirty five thousand. The the actual amounts received was three thirty eight. In twenty twenty two, we spent four hundred and twenty two. It was budgeted three thirty eight, but we spent four hundred and twenty two. So we spent quite a bit more than what was budgeted in twenty twenty two. In twenty twenty three, the budget was three hundred and seventy four. And. The approved budget was three hundred and eighty nine that we actually expended. So the change was minus seven point nine percent we were short. And here's that number, six hundred and twenty three dollars per unit was expended. Those were the expenses, six hundred dollars per unit was what came in. So we were short on the revenue coming in to cover the cost. So we had reserve. It's a good thing we had a reserve in this case to cover these things. Because things things come up that have to be dealt with. So really. This is just a part, another snippet of what that report that came out. It just shows in one page the revenues across the board, the expenses. And then the difference. So we were short twenty three dollars per unit. The the expenses over what was actually, which actually came in. Okay, so line item by line item is on that report. I'm not really going to cover line item by line item. I just gave you a little summary about what's going on with the budget. And if there's any questions about that or anything else I've covered, you can let me know and maybe I could get some help in the room answering that. I mentioned earlier at the beginning that we really don't have anything for PMRs. I explained how that works. We didn't have a PMR, so there's no notes. I did say that we're going to have a list of the policies, and so that's what this list is here. I'll give you a minute to look at that. I'm not answering questions about what policies we should have or anything. I'm just letting you know. And for information, these are the policies that have been in place. I might just point out, down the bottom here you can see Language Access Plan was just voted in twenty twenty two. Reasonable Accommodation Plan was policy was put in place this year, twenty twenty three. And so you can see that there's different years that these things were were put in place. So there's some that were quite a few years ago, like the pet policy, I think someone pointed out was like two thousand and six or something. That was, it really hasn't changed, you know, the the pet policy is effective the way it was written. Doesn't isn't something that has to be changed all the time. So. Again, these are all listed in that in that plan. Just presenting that for you. There is quite a few policies. The policies sometimes are put out, because I used to work at Department of Housing. And so at the department, we said, well, you know, a lot of the housing authorities are really not dealing with. Like, I'm going to use the air conditioners as a as an example. So we put out a policy, we put out a public housing notice and says, we recommend that the housing authorities. Put in place a policy saying, you know, your air condition should make be a certain B T U. So that you don't have to rewire the unit in order to put that in. And, you know, that it should come out in the winter and so forth. We we basically had. Policy that we gave as a sample. And then the housing authorities, it was up to them to implement their policy. So the housing authority would take our draft that the department gave them, D A C D gave them. And then they would edit that and then they present it to the board and the board would vote it. So that's basically how a lot of these policies come into place. Sometimes it's because somebody identified a need. We said, well, we need something in writing that we can manage that policy and put a policy in place. It's presented to the board. The board can certainly, you know, discuss it and talk about it and make changes. And then the board actually votes on those policies, but that's how these policies came into being. Do you have anything to add to that, Pamela, or is that?
The policies, you know, just some of them, like the Language Access Plan, Reasonable Accommodation Plan, the Revenance Policy. Those were, again, affirmative action plan templates coming right from the State of the House. That we follow and we the last three that we approved here were requirements. D H C D said, you you really have to do, you could make tweaks to them, but you've had to have policies in place to cover those things.
So if the board sets the policy and management implements it. When these new policies came out, they understood that they were verbatim. From D H C D, now you're saying that they can be tweaked. How I would, how it was conveyed to me is that when it when it supposedly these last ones that just got voted in twenty twenty three, they were exactly the way. Worded the way D A C D, now you're saying that we could tweak them, so that's I'm hearing two different things.
Because we we used them exactly as D H C D, we did not tweak them. Again, they're they're based on law and regulations and it's just easier to follow the laws and the regulations. And we can't make a policy that's contrary to that. So D A C D did a great job. You you could tweak words here or there, but we really have to follow the policies.
No, I think they did a good job. I just thought it was, I I misunderstood. I thought we had to follow verbatim, anything we came. When we when sort of contradicted this pack, this training packet, which says. That the board helps set, I mean, basically sets policies and the management.
Was we were working on policies, the board that approved the policies were advised that there could be minor tweaks, but again, it's just very straightforward.
If if I could just, I'm almost, I'm almost, I'm almost done with this, on just on those policies. It depends on what it is. To some things that come down from the state, state pretty much, you know, there's regulations that they base their policy on. Other things like maybe your air conditioning policy or pet policy, we might tweak it for the needs of the housing authority. So it all depends on where it came from and how it was initiated. But the waivers, again, we don't have waivers to talk about. It was one of the agenda items on on in the packet. If there were any waivers, I would have addressed them and presented them and said what we did about them, you know, but we have not requested any waivers for here. Waivers when there's a certain requirement and then we're not able to meet that requirement, I'll just use a. It's probably not real accurate, but it's an an example is vacancies, you know, if we had to turn over a vacancy in a certain amount of time. We couldn't do it for one reason or another, we get a waiver for that and we do get those waivers.
So we do have waivers. So waivers in this instance, are they able to plan? That's not the waiver of their time, sorry, who's that they're talking about? They would be talking about a different, a higher level of of a waiver. Because we do, Catholic does have waivers for vacancies in place.
Yes, yes. Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I kind of just really explained how waivers work, but the 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 waivers are for like rent collecting and other policies.
Timelines, if if we need to have our P M R by September first and we were like, you know. There's some kind of staffing issue, a major issue, you could request a waiver, something of that, but we we've never.
So the only other part of this presentation is the surveys, again. The 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 information's there. I don't really want to take a lot of time to go into it. I did, I did cover all of this. In on Tuesday, you know, I kind of went through all of these and just kind of showed what it is. We are pretty comparative to the rest of the state and the small housing authorities in western Maine. You know, so if I go through, you can almost see this, the pie charts are pretty similar. There's not a big drastic difference, you know. Outdoor maintenance, you can see we're a little better than some, so. This is. Heat going out, so we did pretty good with heat not going out for more than twenty four hours. Some of these places had heat out for over forty eight hours. That's what they have red pie chart is, so. We're thankful that we've always been able to keep the heat on here. We should. We got new boilers a couple of years ago, right? And again, these survey results are all based on eighteen people out of the forty people that have received them, eighteen turned them in. And that's what these are all based on. So just whether or not you're feeling safe here at the housing authority. And actually, you know, I I will point this out because I I was concerned that how come people aren't safe? Well, it says the reason that they're not safe is outdoor lighting, right? So you can see we're kind of high. This is that the concern that we are here with. Oh, windows, I'm sorry. The the windows weren't being secured. So the the windows, obviously, we have a window project to fix that. I actually, when I was a Department of Housing guy, I came here and wrote up the windows that they, you can't lock these things, you know, but now that I have. Been here and actually sat there and Tetris the windows. You can actually take certain windows out and flip them around and put them in different orders and voila, they lock, so.
So you can go back before I can score you games?
I think I I think it still ended up a no finding, but I did, I I didn't address it. But and the reason I addressed it, and it's kind of a good point, this is part of the P M R is the Facility Management Specialist, that's what I was. Will come out and do an inspection. If they see something that's a safety violation, if you cannot lock your window, it was a safety violation. And so that's why I wrote it up when I was with the department. And the housing authority, Mary, Mary knew this because she'd been here many years. She knew that they all locked. You just have to. Somebody moved them, took them out to wash them, put them back in wrong and they didn't lock. But they do all lock and they are confusing and we are getting new ones real soon, so. So again, uh, overall safety, I think we're pretty good. And so that was, that was try to, a quick, a quick uh presentation based on compared to on Tuesday. Any questions with that?
In two thousand twenty-two, what drove that eighty-four thousand dollar overage on the budget? What were the main things that happened?
Yeah, I, without having that list here, um, it was pandemic time. I don't know what, uh, this was two thousand twenty-two.
That extension was, well, I guess lifted, you know, touring was lifted.
I'm just curious what drove that eighty-four thousand dollar overage.
Yeah, so two thousand twenty-two actual amounts, so I don't, I don't, I don't have that information. You know, to, to say what that was.
Here, I could, I could look into that thinking. I'm sure it's a whole combination of things, but I'm forgetting that.
Well, I was just curious because that's quite an overage compared to what we were estimating.
Yeah.
Uh, and two thousand twenty-three isn't anywhere near that.
Yeah.
So it just starts me, that's a seventy thousand dollar difference from twenty-two to twenty-three, so it's just a question.
Sure, yeah. And, you know, things that contribute is things like rent's not coming in. There was times where rent wasn't coming in that they were, they were kind of given an excuse.
The, it's the water break and the, uh, Burke Way.
Yeah, things like that, water, water main break, you know, there was, when I came on board, there was a water main break that I had repaired. I understand there was two before me. Yes, this was the third one that came up. I also, like I pointed out in my presentation, that when I did that vacancy turnover, there was fifty thousand dollars that wasn't covered in formula funding that I put into that unit. Because I know that every day that a unit is not rented is a day without rent coming in to make the repairs. So sometimes you have to expend the expenditures to, to get the place fixed up so we can get rent start coming in again. And so that was a big chunk right there, you know, and that, that was uh last year. So.
One thing I don't understand is it was subsidies. We talked about it at meeting. I'm still not clear. When you apply for a subsidy, or do they tell you, we're giving you, do you have to actually apply for it? Or do they just come up with it? And if they come up with it, what's the wait that I keep hearing and eating throughout the years living here? That we had to wait for this subsidy, wait for this subsidy, then, I mean, isn't there, when they offer it to you, when you ask for it, isn't there a timeframe they have to give it to you or that?
So I'm gonna ask Pamela to answer that.
So the, the subsidy is based on calculations. It's when our way of asking for the subsidy is by um submitting the budget that the board proposed. So myself, Carrie, and Harry, who base work together on a budget within the, the department's guidelines. Each year, like this past, they allowed five percent of the so then that's where it's pretty easy, just kind of add five percent to every line item except for you might bump off up, uh, beef up maintenance because we know things are coming up. But when you submit the budget, when it gets, when I hit that button, and it's called, this is the system that we use for D H C D. Um, that's us, that's our request. And then when they approve it, they are approving it. Um, they're, they've approved our subsidy request. We get the money, way at, at their end, really. And that's why we're constantly asking, saying, hey, you know, we, here's the checking account's running a little low, we've got a big bill we've got to send. But there's, there is literally one guy that sits at D H C D I O, and I'm so sorry, I can't say his last names. Um, he's the one guy that then pushed the button to send the money. So he's doing two hundred and forty-eight thousand, but it's all based on formula of how many units you have, what's your rent coming in, and it really works that.
But Pamela, they can also hold it up if we don't have things like the annual plan has to be approved for us to get our subsidies. We have to vote on the warrant reports, et cetera. We have to do these votes and accept the reports to get our subsidies.
So just one correction, the board won't hold it up? It will, it'll be a robotic finding?
Okay.
But the subsidies, um, definitely not having the annual report or submitting your budget late. Things like that will hold on. Getting the subsidy.
Are there any adjustments that are taken into consideration with fuel costs that go up and you have no control over that, price of oil?
So they, they will come in and, and they'll help with that too, because part of the subsidy truly is to pay for um staffing utilities. That's what the, that, that's what D H C D is running looking at. Um, so they do take things into consideration. Some years when we have a lot of snow and then your snow removal costs increase, they'll come out with some emergency funding if they have it and give us money for that as well to help. Um, but, but they truck. I mean, we've had a couple of really good years here where they've given us good budget increases. But there's been a number of years where it's two percent, three percent, very marginal. Um, even I, ten years ago, level funded, which is terrible. I mean, if you look at the, uh, Bruce had the uh, come up and it's about six hundred dollars a unit here. Fair market rate, rent in our area is twelve fifty. So a private landlord is getting twelve fifty for one bedroom unit and we're getting six hundred dollars. That's why that might look a little bit better because they have more funding for repairs or beautification of all the houses.
Any other questions? Bruce, I'm gonna ask you, anything that concerns you the most from year to year? Anything that's not getting done, or you're afraid you're not gonna get the money for, you wish you had, is anything driving you crazy?
Yeah, um, the uh, one of the things that I, that the expenses just seem to be way too high is everything's gone up from what they, what it started. So we, we put these budgets in, by the time it gets to being everything's higher. So any projects higher, but specifically what I like to see is the vacancies turned over. And so I'd love to see more funding available for vacancies, you know, um, and it's just that we only get a certain dollar amount. But I'd like to see money put into that. Once we get some of this building envelope stuff wrapped up, all these windows is a big project. I, I, I really want to be to fix these units up as we turn them over. Um, we have another big project with the doors, you know, that's going to be a big expense to replace all the exterior doors. That's going to help with heat, that's going to help with comfort, and it's going to help with security as well, you know, keeping the doors and everybody safe.
And it, and it, the goal is actually in pretty good shape too, with, with, again, with the windows being done. Um, the boilers were all replaced, and we have one left, I think, on Burke, no, we didn't. We get one left on Burke Way, um, that's the expense that's coming up, that you'll see we did not have funding for it. It's coming out of our reserves. Um, which we can talk about at four quarters. Um, but overall, once these things are, overall, they're in very good shape. And, and we will be able to do the beautification of, of, some folks have nice new cabinets. That, and it does, it, it doesn't change the space or the layout, but it does, it does help.
And does the department dictate when you turn over apartments, exactly what you have to do to floor it, or?
Do you choose exactly? So we do an inspection and we determine when, when somebody moves out, we, we have a move-out inspection. And so we determine at that point how bad things are. The cabinet doors are falling apart and, you know, what, what needs to be done. Tiles are lifting up all over the place. So we go in and do the inspection, and that's when we know. We don't, a lot of times, you know, we can do the annual inspection, we go through, and we fix what we see. But sometimes we have to wait till the place is empty and you start seeing all the, all the real results of the place.
I get, so I'm trying to understand, do we, do we not have money right now to renovate empty apartments?
So we have, we have funds to do it, not enough to do all the work I would like to do, let me put it that way. So in other words, the cabinets, can I put some new hinges on and paint them and get by with that? Yes, they'll be serviceable, they'll work. Um, will they be new cabinets that are gonna be good for twenty years? No. So that's the difference that I have to do. So I, we are gonna turn them over and it will be serviceable and it will be, you know, safe, decent, and sanitary when we turn the unit over. Um, if there were more funds, we would do big renovations of them. We would like replace them all and go through, work our way around and replace them all.
Um, are we applying for all the money that's available to small L H As?
I, I really believe that every, everywhere we did, we, we had to apply for the ARPA funds, we had to apply for CPA funds, get an extra seventy-five thousand for CPA, get an extra seventy thousand for ARPA. Uh, we put in for emergency funds when we had like the water main repairs, and we got approved to do emergency funding for that. So anytime we have an opportunity for life, absolutely. Uh, I'm gonna look for all of those because I know what needs to be done and, and.
Really true that all the pots of mine that are available to small L H As are are being approached by us?
Oh, absolutely. So it, and it's, um, and to turn our whole board, we have to give a good team. Uh, myself, Mary, William, and Bruce all know how to vote to all these different pots of money. Um, one, one of the things that's kind of holding us up alone by now, you can get the emergency money, you can get your ADA money, but when the ADA money runs out and you're a housing authority that has a healthy reserve, which we do have, they say use your reserves. Um, and I did also just want to point out to you, there is budget warning items too for ma- maintenance and contract costs, which we use for unit turnovers. So and, and for repairs, we have, we have budgeted. This is above and beyond what's in our budget.
So do you think we have adequate budgeting for uh turnover renovations?
Um, so that's a double inch, there's a number of money. We, we, but we do, we do a great job with what we have. Um, I'm not a big believer in kind of, I, I don't believe in Band-Aids. So I, we make sure that we turn things over properly and, and maintenance is going in there and fixing what needs to be fixed.
So the main expense when you turn over an apartment, I imagine, is labor. It's not painting tiles, it, it's the amount of time that it takes to renovate, clean up and all that.
It could be if the unit's bad, but it's in housing at least, it's a fixed cost. We're already there, it's, um, it is, you know, Bruce saying ten thousand dollars for a cabinet, that's just for the cabinets. We do need to put it, but that's, materials are for the roof, just.
I'm wondering, your prevailing wage and everything, right? Your prevailing wage.
Anytime we have a project that we, I submit the prevailing wage for people for pensions, yes. And then our, you know, our staff is paid.
So our, our, our staff is not remunerated, they are paid. The maintenance staff, the maintenance staff.
No, I'm just wondering if we need to budget and try to budget or come up with more money?
Yeah.
So we could turn over apartments faster, get the revenue.
Right, well, we do look like, for example, this week, I applied for um compliance funds, I had to think of the word, sorry, because part of this window project changed when they did testing and they found asbestos. So I'm working on the budget and the budget just increased with some change orders. So I went to the, my project manager at the D A C D and said, hey, can we cover some of this? And he goes, let me look into it for you. He came back to me yesterday and said, yes, compliance funds will pay for the asbestos portion of the windows. So that's gonna help with that, you know, because that window project went up on me, we're gonna bring in some more funds to help take care of it.
So is there any solution involved in turning over the apartments to testing?
Oh, okay, so the, the, the time that it takes to turn the units over is, is a, a small portion of it is maintenance turning it over. The bigger portion of it is a whole nother topic that we don't really want to get into, it's something called CHAMP. And it's the way they have to, the application process. So the units can be totally ready, and in many cases, they're ready months before there actually somebody in the units.
Okay.
So that's, that, that's not a maintenance issue, that's more of a system-wide, you know, tenant, uh, uh, approval issue.
So being commissioners, are there any policies you wishes, you wish we should look at or or um, anything that we can do to help your work go more smoothly, more efficiently?
Yeah, I, I don't actually have any other thing right now. Um, we do need to approve this, you know, that the five-year plan that we've put in place here for you, we worked on it with uh.
So you did a five-year plan last year, here, of course, so they overlap, right?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
So you could see some things that I had, I, I had that slide from last year. We had some things on last year that we were able to move up, you know, in this year's five-year plan. And that's because in, in a rare case, not normally that ARPA is gonna come and give us an extra seventy thousand dollars. So I could take some of those things out there and bring them in and, and cover those and, and cover those sooner, you know, but uh.
Right, well, yeah, Sue, please.
I think that one thing we can always bring up at this meetings is, is the renovation of the, of the apartments once someone moves out. With there's never any discussion about people who have lived here a long time, who never had their apartments renovated. They always seem to miss that out. There's many of us that have been here for years that moved into apartments that weren't renovated, and there's never any discussion. So all these people who've been to renovated apartments, people who have been here for a long time have never been renovated, there's never any discussions where that money's gonna come from. And when that's gonna be done for people who have been here really a long time.
Right, so it's a, it's a juggling act to try to do any kind of renovation when someone's living in a unit. As we've identified doing the windows, sometimes there's asbestos, there's things to deal with. So it's, it's not, um, it's not very uh practical to do renovations while someone's in the unit. However, if things are broken in the unit, we will come in and fix them. So today, at another, at one of the other housing authorities we've managed, the, the countertops were bad. Even though they're living in the unit, they're bad, they, they got water damage underneath, and I have the guys replacing, we ordered them. We got, we got the countertops, we're putting them in ourselves versus hiring a contractor, saves a little money. So we found a company that made the countertops, I got multiple bids, got a good deal on the countertops, we had them delivered, our guys are installing today. So when things like that come up, we address them as needed, and we're not gonna just leave things broken. Where if, if we get a report that there's something in the unit that needs to be done. Now, it's not a complete renovation, you know, of a unit, and again, that's not practical most of the time, um, while someone's living in there, to be able to disrupt and, and, you know, have tarps all over the place and dust flying and whatnot, so.
Okay, and the fact that reading through these packets, it always talks about fairness. You're just saying it, it can't be done. You can fix things as they're broken. That still doesn't make up, it doesn't make up for the people that are actually wanting a more, I mean, people are coming here out of the, out of the clear blue sky and total renovated apartment, that people have been here, and you're saying things can be fixed. There's a difference between fixing something and actually a renovation of a apartment. And we bring that up at meeting after meeting, and I think down the road, we have to take a look at that.
Okay, we can do that. Uh, to me, it sounds like when a homeowner deals with, you know, how she'd fix the break, yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, true, that, so, but the residents that are living here are, are going to be reaping the benefits of new windows. You're gonna be getting the doors. Um, there is a mechanism in place if there's a, um, if there's a, some type of, um, like the floors, the floors with asbestos, you know, sometimes we, we have some units with bad floors. Under D C D guidelines, we have to move that person to another unit or hotel or whatever while that's being mitigated and corrected and renovated. And then, and their belongings, and then move them back. And we have this in another housing authority, um, another small housing authority. And it's just four hundred square feet in type. It's a small unit, they're small six, six, seven units. And that project is costing over forty thousand dollars, and we're doing everything we can to stop it. But you can see that when we have funding of a hundred and two thousand dollars a year, if we do one unit, you'd walk, you're pretty much more than logical. So that's why we tried to do things like that. Um, we could write up a, a project, maybe we could get it in for next year. Somewhere in the five-year plan, where we're putting in new kitchen cabinets for all residents. And then you can go through um, and make repairs in occupied units.
Well, so you think residents are pretty aware of this, like, let us know when something's broken, so it doesn't get worse?
They do, but, but then too, if they can come, it's my understanding, I, I was not here yesterday, that uh, somebody made a great suggestion about um putting in new storm doors in the front, so that, that's something we can put in the plan too. Um, I think we need new front doors as well, but, but it does, you know, tenant participation does help for sure.
All right, well, Bruce and Pamela, you're, you're the ones that know if this is what you should be doing, you need a vote from us to approve it?
Yes.
We, so we need two votes today. We need a vote on the five-year board, the capital plan, and then just the overall deal.
Yeah, and the annual plan was the one show, we have a maintenance plan, we have emergency plan, we have, you know, it, it, it's the uh, you know, we have policies in place.
I move that we uh vote on the annual plan.
Okay, do you have a second?
One second.
Richie, okay, other questions about the annual plan? Hope you guys are all good talking to us, especially the new guys who are, are new to all of this, but any other discussion on the annual plan? I'll accept the vote, all in favor of the annual plan.
Hi.
Bye. Do you want to be unanimous, approve it?
I move that we accept the five-year capital improvement plan.
Got it. Take it from Richmond. Any discussion on the five-year capital? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hello.
Got to be unanimous approval. All right, thank you, Bruce, very much, appreciate it. Please, um, especially as new commissioners approach you with questions, please uh. Please, especially as new commissioners approach you with questions, please uh be patient. All right, I'll move on to the director's report, my anthems, warrant reports. Anything to discuss on the warrants?
So I would just point out on the warrant report, it was just saying, um, so there was a big expense on Warren Park Way of the um, the boiler, boiler system went out. There's two units over there that have, are left to be replaced. Um and Charlie Gator, when he was governor, put in um to like re, rebuild it. They won't fi, they won't fund fossil fuel heating appliances anymore. So the um, what housing authorities are faced with is that we either go to, we live in here, fully, um mini splits, which are those uh heat source pumps, which are five years ago, over five thousand dollars a unit, and now they're probably about seven thousand dollars a unit. Um but, and you need one for every room. So that is an astronomical fee, or then we go with boilers. And we made the decision to use reserves to get these last two boilers done. So the one will be consistency throughout the development for when they need to be repairs or replacements. And two, it, the cost was just um, not just, but um nine thousand, oops, ninety, nine thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars.
For each boiler?
Yes, and so we replaced one, we will, we have another one that I expect we'll be replacing in the next year or so.
So how are these fueled?
They're oil.
They're what?
They're oil.
Oil.
These are on oil here too.
Right, so that's the real cost of heating and cooling is the fuel, not the initial purchase, right?
Well.
So are these efficient?
They are high, they're high efficiency oil.
I just got.
But we did, we did put in um in Veltre Town, obviously, the development of four units. And they took out the oil heat and they put in mini splits. And it costs over a hundred and ten thousand dollars for four units for mini splits. And then my residents in seven oh fives, they pay their own utilities. Um in six six sevens, it's included in your utilities. But the tenants there, it's family housing, their bills were five, six, seven hundred dollars a month, electric bills, which were astronomical, so the housing authority actually ended up taking over their utility bills and changing their, their percentage.
Is there any chance of solar panels going on our roofs?
So we, we wouldn't put them on roofs, but we would definitely look into solar, you know. So we do have, um, and that's something I am actively looking for, because in Veltre Town, what I did is we have a solar farm in another community in Commonwealth. And that solar farm pretty much uh pays the electric bill for all of every acres, which is the development. It's um fifty-two units in, in um Veltre Town, almost electric, a hundred percent of electric needed. Um six, six, seven housing, and that solar field, that absolutely makes.
So Hadley has a couple of solar panels, I wonder if they, you know, listen if he says, hey, you know, we're the housing authority trying to help out people who um don't have a lot of resources, would you consider giving us a cheap power?
Well, there's a, there's a net metering contract in, maybe by, there is a gentleman up in um, up at the department that we've worked with that has the connections between the two, um if we're working on it.
I think that's something I see could happen, we don't grow that much power, you know. Okay, right.
And we are aware of solar at Veltre Town, also at Amherst, the solar panels on the roof that have been worked for a few years. I've been working diligently to get them repaired and running into a lot of roadblocks, so I know, I know the difficulties in getting that going, but we are aware of the benefits of solar and are working to.
Okay, just lastly, it, because I, I hesitated to say, but I, I have been talking to somebody about solar panels on like portals, so the residents could park under the solar panels and which would keep the snow off your car, which is a great advantage. And the, you'd get a solar energy.
You're working on that?
I've been talking to somebody about it, it's very expensive, but we're, we're, we're working out how it would work, how we could.
Yes, I think you're a mess. Hmm?
We would have corridors with solar panels.
It's all remiss now, so it's not a good idea. Okay, now we're starting to wrap up, we have warrants. They're all signed, right, we signed to carry that?
Yep.
Treasurers report?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the warrant.
Yeah.
On the truck.
Truck.
The brakes that were done on our truck, sixteen hundred dollars. What did the invoice actually show recently? We looked at the invoice, was that all four? All the brakes all around, all four wheels?
Um you'll notice that that day I was ill and I did not, I wasn't involved in the transactions on that day, so I can't answer your question.
Co groups.
It looks like Rich and Dave, no, no, is that yours or me too?
I'm, yeah, this one, yeah.
Okay, so Rich and Dave saw that one.
I did see that invoice come in, so I, I did personally approve the invoice when it came in. So it was brakes and rotors all the way around, the truck, it needed, it needed all of them. They, they, they were grinding, they were to the point where they were grinding. And so we had to get them, we had to get them repaired. When that invoice came in, I signed and approved it and uh and I actually had to approve even the quote to get them done. So it was like, well, this is what they tell us, like, well, we need, we need the truck, we need the brakes, let's get it done. I approved that.
So this brings all, all four of us.
I, I don't wanna give it, it's specific information that I'm not clearly about, but you know.
The reason I ask is because I did front brakes, only front brakes on my truck. It's, and uh, it was about three hundred and some odd dollars. So for this all-around, I, I don't know. Do we ever get estimates or we just take our truck to College Street Motors and they do what they do, I, I don't know. The other question I have on it, when our truck is used in Amherst and Veltre Town, do they pay a portion share of our, our expenses up to our vehicle?
So we haven't in the past, but we are working to get all of it more finally with the accounting. Because what we were doing in the beginning, those first several years when Amherst wasn't building Hadley for, fully for me and for admin staff. It was just, it's a lot, it was done in this type of agreement. But we are absolutely going to where we're we're gonna only use the truck here, where um we were approved for the budget line, you know, in Amherst finally for a new vehicle for Amherst. So then the staff will out.
So that's, that's why I still advocate for an audit. So these things can be discovered for us, because I would not know that, unless you just told me that in prior years, that uh we hadn't done that, but now we're trying to work toward it. That's why I'm still a strong advocate for a four-year audit.
So you also have a charged uh padling for when the truck or the vehicles are used from Amherst, right? You have a charge padling.
I don't know.
Yeah, that, that was my point is that um as we looked at vehicles, I've been involved in that, you know, what's more practical, a truck or a van? So a lot of times, if we're not plowing with the truck, the van makes sense, if we're not hauling landscaping away. So here at, at Hadley, you get the benefit of a fully stocked van at Amherst. So when there's plumbing problems, when there's things like that here, we have, we have drains clogged all the time. They bring the Amherst van over here because of our agreement, we share all of our equipment. We don't have a full array of equipment for each housing authority, but we, if we have it at one of the three, we do use it over here. So we get, we have a van that comes over here stocked with supplies and we discharge those supplies too badly after we use them. But we, it, it goes both ways, is what I'm getting at.
It's a great job on that van, Amherst, if you pick me out of right.
It would.
Even though Hadley gets the benefit of it.
Hadley.
Because I see that van over here all the time.
It is.
And it's the Amherst, and the Amherst van, yeah.
Okay. So Bruce, you are the one that looks after the invoices for repairs?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Well, a couple of months ago, we had repairs on the plow. We, I saw that in one of the warrants prior February, January, February, we had some issue with the plow.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, I don't remember.
I just remember seeing it, I have it.
Yeah, I don't, I.
I've always been.
I, I approve every single invoice from most three housing authorities.
Just ask.
And I do, I do look at them and I do remember the brakes, because it was pretty recent. You know, it was a few, a couple of months ago. I don't, I don't remember the plow, but it, it had to come through me, it, Kerry does not approve them until I approve them.
Okay. I know the people that use College Street Motors and they don't complain, so I hope they're being fair. We would not, or we still?
Um, we, you know. Yeah, we just need approval, I, I move that we approve the warrant report from six one twenty-three to six one twenty-three. And the warrant report, which, you want to do it in separate?
We, no votes.
Okay, and the warrant uh transactions from six fifteen twenty twenty-three to six fif, and six fifteen twenty twenty-three. Because remember, we do these every two weeks, that's why they're not a full month. Uh and then, and that's it, it's.
Could you, could you point out the totals of the charges?
Oh, so for the, and to include the amount for the warrant from six one twenty twenty-three as two thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-seven cents. And the uh amount of the warrant for six fifteen twenty twenty-three and six fifteen twenty twenty-three is just a minute, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-four cents.
I'll entertain a motion to rule, accept both these warrants. I'll make the more fin with that.
I second.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I will continue to vote no on the warrants until we have our right.
Fair enough. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So three in favor, two against. Next on the agenda, transition report, is it?
Yep.
Under you, this is.
Yep, so that is um, this is just an informational one again, it's, this one doesn't require a vote.
Okay.
We have any questions?
Please, let's all look it over and bring questions next month if we don't have rights on it, it's fine. All right, property managers' report, you've been including vacancies, is that Mary William or?
That's me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be doing a home pool. Um so the property, uh the vacancies first, so is, there are three, this is as of five thirty-one. There were three Goldenport apartments and two Burke Way apartments, so it's for a total of five units. Um there is a, a tenant for one of Burke Way units. So that'll be, that'll be correcting itself. Um and there is, we do have a um, we've had a vacancy this month as well too, we'll have a vacancy then actually.
At Burke's Way?
At Goldenport.
So Burke's Way is going from two to one?
Yep. And Golden, hopefully, we will have somebody coming in too, but again, we'll have a discussion on CHAMP at another time. Uh but what, we do have a vacancy, we had two legal actions this past thirty days.
Okay, so right now, there's three developments.
Yes, and then for the T A R, um we are aggressively working it, really trying to get folks to, um there's still raft money available, so we do have um several people that are not paying um rent for various reasons or fell behind for various reasons. And there's a combination of um working with them to get raft money, which is from, from the department, ultimately from HUD, to help folks when they're in trouble. Um get into repayment agreements, so you can spread it out over six months up to a year. Um and then also court action um with the hopes of getting a court-ordered rental agreement. Um two of these, so the, the six six seven, which is the uh senior disabled, has a high balance, but of that were the two legal actions that I was telling you about that are totally just under eight thousand dollars. So that number will clear up, we'll, we'll be bringing um sometime in the next month or two, some write-offs. And what happens with the write-off is um if, if somebody's passed away, it, it just goes away, we write it off to chase off the books. If um somebody is still available around, we send out notices, they send out a couple of notices um to try to collect it, and then it goes on to the collection report, so a credit report. And then we are also now working with the Department of Revenue. And the Department of Revenue will attach lottery winnings, tax returns, all of that, and seize the money and return it back to the housing authority. So we're, we're hoping to get these clear.
Is the six six seven the Goldenport?
Yes, it is, yeah.
So the late fees have jumped up from March from two sixty-five to April three thirty-two to now May eighteen hundred and eighty-three dollars, fifteen hundred dollar increase.
Look, and that's other charges too, because um for the two court actions that we have, there's legal fees.
They're put on there.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, here.
I just don't understand Pam, why property manager reports are not given by the property manager when we have a property manager. I don't, I think it's a good idea, but property manager comes to meetings to understand what's happening. And without just hearing from you and, and Mary Management and not getting a sense of what's happening by coming to one of these meetings. I, I personally think as a board member, that down the road, when you hire another property manager, that they should attend meetings instead of you and Mary becoming the property manager doing it.
So that's an active, that's actually not in their job description, and that's not what typically happens at the two hundred and forty-eight housing authority. And as board meetings have become more and more contentious, it becomes a little bit too much for a staff member to have to handle. So we're, I'm, it is my job, but it starts with me. I know all the, everything that's going on in the agency, if I don't, I'll find out. Um but it's my job to report to seventy thousand.
I'd like to hear some feedback from other people other than what you're saying about the property manager report.
I'm, I'm happy to give you feedback.
No, I mean, not you, I'm talking about people in the hierarchy of, you know.
The hierarchy of.
Of D H C D, of people who are, people who are of the running other housing authority, does their property manager actually get the property report?
Yeah, they don't.
Usually don't.
That's why it's under the executive directors' report. And then when you, when you do get that training from D H C D, which I don't believe they've sent it to you yet, um but let me know if they, if they have actually, it'll show you, the, the staff follow underneath, they don't follow under the board. And it isn't an executive director's report, it's my job to give you the report.
So why shouldn't we even call it property manager's report, why shouldn't it just include it under executive?
Capital facilities work order reports, see the recodes here.
Again, I'm just providing those reports uh for them. The capital updates, um I don't have any board votes, uh just the, the window project uh got delayed because of change orders, so the windows didn't get ordered. So whenever they finally do get ordered, I'll get the lead time. Until I, until they get ordered, I don't handle the lead time of when they're gonna be here. And so last time it was five to six weeks, so I think it's gonna be five to six weeks after we, you know, place the order before we get to that. We've been anticipating, you know, that for a long time, and unfortunately, there's delays that happen, but they are, are legitimate. Some of them is me seeing the way it was designed and what was going out and challenging it and asking that to be corrected before we place the order. So as far as the work orders, we do have some completed work orders for the last couple of months. We also have any that are still open. Um I noticed that on one of them there, instead of bathroom vanity, I, I let you know that I didn't order a vanity. You know, just getting that vanity in takes a little bit of time. So, and that's an example of something breaks and we order, but no one's in. So um really, not a vote required, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the work orders or, you know, the applicable.
Well, the third column in your reports is the date of completion of the work, correct?
One of the, one of the pages, yeah, that actually, page one of four
Yeah.
Um should show, yeah, completed, completed.
Okay, so those are all days following, the following pages show the date that the work was completed.
Yes.
All right. And um as far as uncompleted work requested? Is that just the one on the front page?
Yes. Yeah, because we take care of those when they come up.
Okay.
Requested work order confirmed.
That's good. Okay, commissioners' discussion, discussion of how to do the warrant signing. So once again, Kerry. So once again, Carrie Monley has a name on.
Monney.
Monley, thank you, has requested that we do automatic check signing. And I've told her that's okay with me as long as the warrants continue to come to us immediately after the checks go out. I don't know if that's good accounting practice or not, but I understand why she does want to have to put that into Hadley. Reese, you're the treasurer, you're really the one who should decide, in my opinion, how the checks get signed.
Well, I don't think it should be my sole opinion. We have Harry, who's very uh, has so much experience in accounting, auditing, et cetera. Sue's been around for a long time as a tenant. Richie's been around for a long time, knows all about this. Uh, he's got a lot of board experience with, in housing. So this is not for Carrie's convenience. This is not at all was this ever discussed as Carrie's convenience. No, that, this is, she just looks at this, how we forever before.
So it's to avoid late payments?
It's to avoid late payments, fees and interest. How we did it before worked and it worked well. If there's an error, like, like Harry has pointed out an error before, it will get caught. And we don't need to delay paying to make sure that the money going in is the.
Thank you.
What I would suggest is an accounts payable policy that we, if it could maybe get our accounts payable subcommittee. We do have a policy right now, but it is outdated. And as Harry had pointed out, you know, during the pandemic, we had board vote both of this. But the, but the, the way we were doing it, the automatic signatures. But if we're gonna go to automatic signatures or make any real change, we really should, especially for something as serious as a found gain, update the policy, bring it to the board, the board approves it, and then we move forward.
All right, I agree. So I'm looking for volunteers to be on the accounts payable subcommittee.
Wanted in pressure, yeah.
Pressure, Richie?
Yeah, Richie and I were all over doing that policy.
Okay, would you be happy to help out with that?
So, you can only meet two at a time.
What?
Richie and I are on policy and procedure. And we'll just add accounts payable to us.
Okay, would you, would you let Harry take a look at the policy after you come up with it?
Of course, the whole board has to look at it.
I'd like Harry to review if the board goes to the whole board, I'm trying to say, because he's got experience.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is that a paper?
Yeah, and make sure that we have live commissioners be on the signature. All right, I mean, you can bring it to all of us at the same time, that's fine. Here, just take it out of the box, let us see. So you think you might have that by next month? Is that fair? Is it, is there a lot to do?
Well, we'll see if we, we'll, we'll look at, at what we have now, we'll look at current prototypes that make, that makes sense for us, and we'll follow together, fine tune it, and then send it to Harry to see what he, you know, if he has any more.
Okay, good.
And we'll only do that because we can't beat, get a subcommittee with where there are too people, just don't do it.
Without post.
We will not deliberate through email, we will just for informational purposes.
I've stopped doing emails, Stephen.
I know, right?
You've seen that, right? You've seen, you've seen nothing coming from me anymore.
That's right. So, so we will send it out for informational purposes only to the entire board, how's that?
No deliberation through email, too good. And you might look at how other accounts bill, other big man.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. That's typically what we do, is we will bring to the other housing authorities, ask for copies of their policies, see what fits, seems to fit for us, um, what's needed, make sure we've fucked in and sold out.
So as a, as a selectman, I remember the town administrator here, now managers have a network through Gmail. You have that with other housing authorities?
Yeah, so we do, so we have a Western Mass Executive Directors Association, plus we do the Mass NARO, which is a conglomerate of all two hundred and forty eight housing authorities. Um, and we have NERC NARO, which is the, excuse me, the new one conference of, of housing professionals that we, we have emails, we have chat rooms, uh, we do the conferences, we go to conferences. It's just days of connecting and can you send me this and.
Okay. And this is the NARO that you now want the board for?
So thank you, I'm, I'm on the Mass NARO Board Directors and I chair the.
Statewide?
Statewide, and I chair the Professional Development Committee, and I'm also on the NERC NARO Professional Development. So for anything like this one.
We're lucky to.
Yeah.
We matter.
As we want to review policies, we'll take probably two or three at a time. You could send those out, say, hey, has anybody, anybody refreshed that policy recently? Could you share with us? Is that what you would do?
Yeah, we, we typically don't do two or three at a time, we'll, we, we, because they are, they are a good amount.
Okay.
Unless they'll do that, there's, we'll, it's.
All right, what else we got? So management agreeing, re-signing.
So we're not resigning, I'm sorry, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be. So our management agreement is going to expire at the end of September.
Okay.
So I have in the packet for you folks, the housing notice, um, and it is from twenty twenty, but it is the latest one with all the attachments of, um, and it not only does it cover a management agreement, what we also cover is putting together an interim executive director. So that's in there too, for whatever reason. Um, and then, what's the information in there Pam too about just hiring a need? There is another whole P H N about hiring a need. So I do think that the board should be reviewing this and deciding, and the Amherst Board has to review these. And it is, um, both boards have to come to an agreement to sign on management.
Still, we have to consider meeting, I suppose, with the Amherst Board to discuss those. Commissioners to commissioners.
No, 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 we need one ourselves.
What?
All of this?
No, just one thing.
Well, yeah, a lot of it is, um, is just attachments. So like the management agreement that we have, it's, this is that template. So they're just templates. So anyway, it's a huge packet, but the, the P H N notice itself is much there.
Right, 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 right. So what I'm trying to say is we would have to explore whether Amherst is interested in continuing the management agreement with, as we.
No, what to do is we fill all this out or have.
Well, you have to decide as a board, if you want to decide.
As a board, give them a meeting. Want to continue or re-up the management agreement contract with Amherst. At which time, if we decide, then we sign it, et cetera, and then send it to Amherst, and then they decide.
And so these next couple of months, and I would say we should really have it done by August.
Right.
The Hadley Board needs to decide, do they want a management agreement with Amherst? Do they want a management agreement within another housing authority? Do you want your own executive director back? What direction does Hadley want to go in this way?
Questions? Sure. Was it when you first came on four years ago, was the board given this Benstone, uh, you know, this is a thorough management agreement?
Explain.
Well, that didn't come out till twenty twenty, so the original. When did you start, what year?
It was twenty eighteen, and it was a P H N from an earlier time, but it was almost identical. Uh, the management agreement has not changed, the actual agreement itself, but the board was given that. And they also had a proposal from Amherst that outlines a staffing plan, what we were planning on doing. So they absolutely reviewed all of that.
And being a tenant who, who still to this day does not feel like the management agreement is legitimate because of the way it was handled, because of a sign, you know, three years after, supposedly signed, not by the, Mr. Burkhardt's name's not on it, it's just signed by D H C D and went blank all those years. You can use COVID up to a certain point. And then when they lifted the COVID sanctions, it was a big period of time with this management agreement could have been signed. I feel personally as a, as a, as board member, that I'd like to have a private attorney look at this contract and discuss it with them to see if they think it's illegitimate. Even if it's ending, I still want to know if it was legitimate all this time, because we know when everyone sort of pushes it away all the time.
So actually, they didn't push it away, Commissioner. What, what happened is, and you have the gentleman sitting here who signed the contract and voted on it. So it wasn't supposedly, and the undersecretary of the Department of Housing absolutely ratified the contract.
So there's nothing signed. What do you mean that Richie signed it?
He was, he voted for it. It's, and it's the digital service, and it was, the governor allowed them to have it, but during COVID.
Then why did we go to meetings where we said snail mail, lost in the mail, encumbered? No, I don't have a contract, and all of a sudden there's a contract they sign. That's sort of contradicted, we've got to.
There's a lot of. Right, and we, we keep saying the same thing over and over.
Because I'm not satisfied as a, as a board member. And, and he's not the one who's supposed to be signing it, Richie's supposed to be signed by Michael Burkhardt.
No, it's signed by both commissioners. It's signed by the commissioner of Veltertown.
Right, excuse me.
Add a solution. So it's just a nice, we can't keep rehashing things.
Well, yes, because we're not.
But there's, there, sometimes you have to agree to disagree. And again, this is where it's just taking up so much time.
But it's an important thing, without a, without a legitimate contract.
We do have a contract.
Right, have a little argument. Well, it is our business, because she wants us to sign another contract.
No, actually, that's not what I'm saying. I'm fully outlining your opportunity to go with another housing authority while giving the higher your own executive director.
This is.
She's given us a packet, the entire packet for us to decide what this board, Hadley wants to do.
But you're not interested in finding out up to this point if, if there's a legitimate contract in the first place because of the lack of sanctions?
The only thing that I raised, define my name, Mr. Chair. The only thing that I had raised months ago was that when we finally got the signed contract by the D H C D, that we didn't have the respective chairs re-sign that, and then the D H C D, I think it was February something. That's the only thing that I brought up, that we took the time to finally get a signed contract from the D H C D. It would have been nice to have both respective chairs at the time sign it, then the D H C sign it. And we, and then it's only seven months from February to September. So no, I'm not interested right now in what had happened, because we're three months away from the end of this operation.
So we have to be smart.
Or we're gonna continue with whatever we all decided to sign. That's all I had said back in front of you.
I've got public comments.
Public comments. Public comments.
Capitalist. Again, 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 Wi-Fi in this room. Last month, you said you sent out a work order. It doesn't take a month to put Wi-Fi in.
So Bruce, any comment on how to get Wi-Fi?
They were just making comments. Yeah, I actually met, had our company come out here, met with them. They recommended certain parts we needed to get the Wi-Fi in, to make it a secure system. I ordered the parts, they called me yesterday, the parts are in. I says, could I schedule it for Friday? They said, we're booking two weeks out. So I set up an appointment for, I believe it's the eighteenth.
What's the only time?
When they're gonna, when they're coming, the eighteenth of next month, to come and install the separate Wi-Fi, the guest Wi-Fi.
Thank you. And who's the company?
Entree Technologies.
Entree, I don't, where?
Out of, um, West Springfield.
West Springfield, thank you. Okay, what else got you?
I was interested in Bruce saying that there is maintenance on twenty four hours a day. If that's so, why are we paying a sixty five dollar lockout fee? Or if a tenant is locked out, which would tap into my next door neighbor who couldn't call, I, I look after her. Um, I was, we were told to call Lady Locksmith.
Do you understand?
Yeah, um, yes, I do understand the problem. So maintenance is on call for twenty four hours, but if they're deployed, my understanding is that it's a minimum of a three hour, because they're union today, they're union. So if somebody gets locked out after hours, every, uh, ever call requires the maintenance man under union contract to get three hours of pay. So the other thing is, is that the sixty five dollar lockout fee, I don't think has ever been, nobody has ever said it's ever been required. It, it's just never been required so far, nobody's said.
It is true.
It's been in the tenant newspaper.
Wait, no, it's never been applied to a tenant ledger, and what we do, it's a, it's a deterrent, and we work with people. Um, usually when somebody gets locked out, it's a, it's a one-off thing. It doesn't happen very often, and you understand that's happening, so we, we take care of the locking. Um, in the, in Gamrus Locksmith, who we, we use for this service, bills the housing authority. And we don't bill back in these one-off, even sometimes a two-off incidents. Um, if there seems to be something going on with a resident where they're, they're having trouble misplacing their key and things, we come up with a different work, uh, a different way of, we'll, we'll get you a lockbox, which again, the housing authority pays for, so you get the lockbox. Um, or we might have to go to other areas of maybe the resident service coordinator, working with them to say, do you have a family member or a friend close by that can be, um, because it, it can become burdensome. We actually don't have a lot of lockout, no lockout calls.
All right, so we will work on the lockout, uh, in addition. Sounds like it's not as.
I mean, they have to get paid, I mean, they get paid for three hours, and half of what they get paid for working.
No, if, if a maintenance person's called in after hours to go take care of a lockout situation, any situation, an emergency water leak, whatever, they get paid a minimum of three hours. That's, and it's under, it's by contract, isn't it?
It is contract, yeah. You know.
All right, Judy, what else you got? We'll figure this through.
I, myself and at least a few other tenants would like to see this room for this meeting rearranged. Not this long table, like to see it back over there so the board can see everybody that's working here. This does not work.
What's wrong with the current arrangement?
It's, uh.
We can see all of you and you can see all of us.
I know, but it's. I can't come up with a word. It's not conducive to being together, thinking, looking at each other in the eye.
Yeah, I like.
Working together.
Like, I like everybody around the round table.
Exactly.
It makes it very, very hard for Alex to film if he's gotta be looking at backs of half.
I asked Alex about it.
You can film a round table, you want to be in the middle of a round.
We could, we could film a round table, we got Alex. We could film a round table.
Really?
Yes, I all got to bring my owl and a computer.
Okay.
So the other reason why we went straight was because the tenants, when they're at the, at that desk, that table, commissioners would have their backs to the residents, and we got complaints from residents that the commissioners had their backs. Okay.
So this doesn't work for you, Judy, I mean, you can see all of us.
No, no, it doesn't. And it's not just me, it's a few other tenants as well.
Well, maybe they get covered.
The round table gives you the opportunity to all see each other, eye contact, not this, yeah, eye contact, looking at each other, making decisions together, not one at this end and one at the end.
I'll call that over with the commissioners. We'll, we'll think about that.
Okay. Uh, we're also sort of a follow up on what Sue brought up is the lack of a property manager. There has been a turnover of five property managers. Now we don't have any property manager, and the hours are down to practically none. The office is not being managed.
Thank you. So I was on my list to ask you about, what's, what's happening with staff?
It's the fourth property management, there's lots of turnover in the industry, the industry is back in, in the world. If you read any kind of business news, you know, people are, people are having trouble with.
We're not talking about that, we're talking about housing right here.
Housing, and I'm telling you it's housing, and I just.
The turnover has been outrageous.
It's hard to find here?
It, it does, and I will point out too, that how many executive directors did you have in a ten year period? And Hadley has always had huge turnover, have a huge turnover.
Yeah, we had, no.
And it had a year period. Darlene and Howard and Mary.
That's twenty years though.
No?
Okay, I wanna.
Yes, so there's a big turn, there's a big turnover. And we are staffing the office now sixteen hours a week.
There in Hadley?
Yeah, for the summer. Yeah, that's where, and we're moving the application office out of Hadley and back into Amherst.
Okay. So normally people would come to Hadley and ask for a vacation for them.
But we started that, because again, we thought it would be a good, it's centrally located, there's parking, it would give Hadley more hours. But then there's complaints that the, the person working the applications doesn't know anything. So I'm putting a ton of staff on Hadley, including my director of facilities, our office administrator, director of housing, property managers, application, all of these people are working lots of hours, well above the sixteen hours that Hadley is. And we're, we're not getting the results here that we need to get.
Then why is the door saying Monday and Friday only and Tuesday? Then why does the door say Monday and Friday only and Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, when all along, we've had somebody here five days a week, occasionally on Wednesday, but always Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
I, right, I just
We're getting the 16 hours, the days go by with nobody here.
Well, they are actually, they are actually working, they're available by phone and Hadley is the 16-hour a week housing authority, according to the department.
So I would like to add to that, that there are at least four tenants that live here that can't use the phone. They don't know how, it's not available to them. They need to walk down here to get a work order, for instance. There's no one here. And they don't, and the phone system doesn't work for all the tenants there. It just doesn't. It's complicated. They don't know how to get in touch with management.
You're talking about trying to get a live person?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I have the same experience.
There should be a way for tenants to be able to put in a work order or, and I'm speaking of one of the tenants in my building specifically, who does not know how to run this, run her life. And I say, so I tell her, you have to go down in the office. She comes down here.
She is professional.
Excuse me.
The tenant has professional knowledge.
I am aware. She, I, I send her down here to get a work order. The work order never got to the maintenance. When maintenance was here, I said, did you get the work order? Did you change the screens? No. I, but, but maintenance, who is the best part of Amherst housing, went over to her apartment and did it.
Okay.
Kudos to maintenance.
Everybody's hearing you. Thank you, Judy.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
Where are the paper agendas that were going to be put out for people? All right. Thank you. I would like to propose changing the no smoking policy. The no smoking policy, as I understand it, is 30 feet away from the building. 30 feet, not two feet, not one foot, 30 feet away from the building. It's also my understanding that the smoking policy in Belcher Town states if you get, you get a notice if you're smoking, you know, in a improper area, you get a notice. If you get, if they get another complaint about those people smoking, you get a second notice. After that, they get a violation of the lease. We don't have that on our smoking policy. And the smoking policy here is not being, it's not being taken care of.
So it's not strong enough, is what you're saying?
I'm sorry?
Not strong enough policy?
Absolutely. And it's not just that. It's not, it's like, it's not being enforced by management. That is the problem. Not being enforced by management. People like myself and others.
Here's a quick answer. We're enforcing the Hadley smoking policy in Hadley, but it does bring up a great opportunity to revisit the non-smoking policy in Hadley. And each of the three housing authorities we have have a different housing authority, a different policy. Amherst, there is absolutely no smoking on the grounds anywhere. In Belcher Town, it's a dedicated smoking area. In here, it's 25 feet, but I'm not, it's a certain distance, a certain distance from it. But they, it's, I would fully support, I'm a non-smoker, I would fully support saying nobody smoke. But it's something that we should start talking to tenants about real quick. And getting a tenant input on it because it directly affects the lives of the tenants. And then coming up with a change and bringing it to the work to change the policy.
Logistically, with the way our buildings are structured, would you have a, like you just mentioned, a designated area? So they're not even the 25 or 30 feet or 10 feet. They go to this area and they smoke and then they go home.
Yeah, you could have a couple of benches along
They'll go home, they smoke and then, and if they have to go back, they go back and smoke again.
But at that weather, I don't winter storm.
It, it is. So we have, we have benches with the smoking joke and sign in Belcher Town. It, it's, it's a good policy, but people don't always follow policies too. So and we've had people talk over the years about using capital money to get bus stops for smokers. And that doesn't seem to be the right just public sense either. But absolutely, we could work on the policy and change it.
Okay.
A tenant chat, topic of tenant chat.
Karen, if we had NTO here.
She's doing the job too.
Anything else, Judy, or have you answered? Sure, we have another speaker.
Oh, okay.
And it's this time of the year, it's a lot of kids go to their own places. Lot of kids from out back go through here on their bikes.
Yeah.
Which is fine. But the cars that are out there, they come in and are thinking they're going to get, go through. And I've clocked them at 50, 60 miles an hour and just in the couple, last couple of days, and the kids are right there.
So what are your suggestions?
It's an accident waiting to happen.
You think they need signage?
I don't know exactly what to do about it.
Shotgun? No idea.
Yeah, so you have, we do have speedos that are, they're, they're going to be putting them out into the road. There's the temporary ones that go out in the summertime. And Bruce has signs on order. There's a ton of signs out there. I do think with the construction that's going on, I think people are cutting through. Also, the GPS tells people that Burke Way and Golden Court are up rooms and they're not
You cannot cut through, right?
No, there's a gate. There's a
You could.
And the signs say this is not a thruway.
Yeah.
You can't see the signs.
And by the way, I did add another sign. So we have, we actually have three, there's three signs from this way. It says not a thruway. There's one right at the end. The other side only had one right at the street and so you could easily miss it. It was a small sign. I put a rather large sign in about 20 feet and that was just installed in the last few weeks. So we ordered it, but it, so nobody coming from Burke Way would, they would realize it's not a thruway as well. Plus that gate is locked all the time.
All right.
Stupid thing with the kids. That's the main thing right now. They're really out on their bikes. As a matter of fact, in the 20 odd years that I've lived here, I've never seen so many.
So many kids?
Kids on bicycles, which
Haven't a
A car will be right behind them. No one, God knows how fast to
So we need some slow signs and some no, no thruway.
Speedos.
Cars don't enter unless you live there.
Speedos should first come in. So it's, and then, and the thing is, is there's a lot of people come around where that apartment is, what's the last apartment where Junkie used to live? What number was that?
47?
47. It's on a curve there. So people come in real fast.
And you're always, you hit them straight.
Mine. Sounds like an important thing to do. We're not to solve the problem today, but let's let Pamela and Bruce work on that.
His name, he's not here.
It doesn't matter. I just say, what kind of tenant?
I wanted to bring up three things as a tenant. One is the refrigerator being broken. It has a sign on it and the sign disappeared, but we have to have a working refrigerator. We have functions down here where people come and we need to give, we've been bringing up that refrigerator.
Is there a work order being placed for it?
Yeah, well, we've mentioned it. It's, we don't own it to put a work order, but we've mentioned it in so many meetings.
I'll check
And it's also never, I don't think it's up to the capacity of coldness. We need to get a thermometer.
Okay, we'll check it.
Number two is the water outside. I understand that one of the other housing authorities that Amherst manages has now put back the water on the side of their unit so we can water our gardens again. And then it's not, we used to be able to water our gardens and one day, and one day the, they got soldered shut years ago without telling tenants. Now I understand that one of the housing authorities manages, it's turned on the water for tenants to be able to So why is that not across the board?
Chairman, independent housing authority, these are dated, dated.
And any such
You're matching us, we're not dependent.
You are going to depend.
Number three, this we brought up at many meetings about this phone call, like Judy said, it's hard for a lot of elderly disabled people to call the office. They get Amherst and then they get all these extensions.
Excuse me, sit here, say.
Are you chairing a meeting?
I don't have
Please, guys.
Come over, it's into being, not to remind you, you're being rude.
Let's be respectful.
We brought this up at so many meetings about the telephone system here because of an elderly and disabled housing authority. People can no longer call into Hadley. They have to call into Amherst. It's very confusing. Push this, push this. If you want to dial by name, we have to relook at this and not just keep talking about it.
I've talked to Mike Burkhardt about that. I hope he's working on it.
Folks, this is a day to day
Right here.
It's a clocking the executive director. These are day to day.
I just have
So, so folks can call at Hadley telephone number and it automatically goes to the Amherst. Now, it's, so it's, they're dialing an old familiar number. The second point of it is, is that Entree, our new IT folks are clearing up the whole system. They are working on it. And I understand it's frustrating and I understand that I, the, the Wi-Fi is frustrating, but again, there's the world is understaffed. I'm, I'm carrying around a new laptop because my old laptop died. And I have internet connection and that's it. And I have to wait till the 13th of the month to get all my stuff back on my laptop too. And I have to run the authorities.
Well, we hear you. It'd be great to have a live
But it's not about being frustrated, it's about if some people just can't do it. If you're having tenants that can't reach
But when the tenants who are elderly and disabled, which is, as I discussed in a prior meeting, or it's the vast majority of our clientele, when they call the social security office, when they call senior center, when they call any office, it's the same thing. There's no longer funding for receptions. You're just
Then you have to make the phone system easier for people to use.
And that's exactly what we're doing. We're working with Entree to clear now.
And when is this, when is this, we keep hearing about it.
So they just started a meeting and everything takes time, unfortunately. And it's very frustrating for everybody.
So freedom to all, but not, certainly, great. Thank you.
I have one.
There's always work to do.
One, one more. The recycle bin.
Recycle bin?
Out here is disgusting, beyond disgusting. And one of these days, there's going to be a bear in the dumpsters. It is stinky, it's, it's overflowing, it's absolutely hideous.
Okay.
No sanitation whatsoever around the dumpsters.
Work it out, sir.
No, actually, I have, I have a call. I would be calling USAID today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Friends, all good stuff, guys. Thank you for speaking up. Get more neighbors to come speak up, please.
Next meeting?
Next meeting, yeah.
Yeah, a little less than 10, so we
Yeah, we only did 10 today because we all, some of us all thought that they were planning, finding plans at the same time. So let's see, that means July. What time would be like to meet in July, towards the end, right?
Last Tuesday of the month, is that when we're meeting?
Yes, last Tuesday of the month.
That would be the 25th.
That would be the 25th?
About 11.
25th at 11?
Yeah.
July 25th. Motion to adjourn, sir.
More info.
I'm going to be adjourned.
Because I see it so much, because I'm right up there. And in the evening, you might not think it would be bad. Things would slow down. The little kids, and I mean preschool, are out here, see, on their scooters, not bikes, their scooters. No, no idea, no idea that they could be just wiped right up.
So many wish I could just
That maybe attention should be brought to the people that live there. Parents, really, because something will happen and it will be devastating.
All right, thank you.
That really is what I do see the need for, just as much, if not more, for me, that
Okay, seems to make sense. Thank you, buddy.
And move that we adjourn?
Second. Thank you. All favor of adjourn? Thank you.